I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Alabas.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Falcons.
Here. And if someone could make the motion to approve the agenda as it's presented?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening. And if you come forward, we do ask that you state your name and then write down your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less. That would be greatly appreciated.
My name is Aaron Trisdale, resident of Cadillac. Good evening. My name is Aaron Trisdale. I am a resident of Cadillac. I'd like to speak on the concern regarding the overpopulations of stray cats, free-roaming cats across the neighborhood. My complaint is due to the scattered, well-meaning neighbors who, by luring and feeding, releasing the stray cats, encourage excessive breeding without supporting the responsibility of health care and restraint of said animals. Section C-48 Cadillac Code of Ordinance. Most of us are cat lovers. However, there are health and property concerns for all residents to consider. Well, we'd like to know if this is a subject previously given attention and if there are steps presently being taken to address this issue. If not, we've... If not, then we present the concern today. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. And this evening, we do have the minutes from our September 18th meeting.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. And this evening, we have several communications to go over.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the display of a banner from November 6th to the 13th, 2023, for the Cadillac Band Boosters Hobby and Craft Show.
I will make that motion to approve the display of a banner from November 6th through 13th, 2023, for the Cadillac Band Boosters Hobby and Craft Show.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the display of a banner from November 13th to the 20th, 2023, for the Cadillac Garden Club's Holiday Home Tour.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from November 13th to the 20th, 2023, for the Cadillac Garden Club's Holiday Home Tour. Support.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
It's being recommended to approve the request from Zion Lutheran Church to place one sign at each of the locations listed on October 20th and 21st, 2023, for their craft show.
I will make that motion to approve the request from Zion Lutheran Church to place one sign at each of the locations listed on October 20th and 21st, 2023, for their craft show.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. And this evening, we do have one appointment, new appointment? Oh, I apologize. Didn't mean to rush you, Sandy.
Fine. We're... It's being recommended to approve the display of the holiday-lighted garland from November 20th, 2023, to January 2nd, 2024.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of the holiday-lighted garland from November 20th, 23, to January 2nd, 2024. Support.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Now, we have a new appointment tonight.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the appointment of Casey Wickenhauser to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 2nd, 2027.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Casey Wickenhauser to the Cadillac West Corridor Improvement Authority for a four-year term to expire on October 2nd, 2027. Support.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. And I'd like to thank her for being willing to serve. As a relatively new person to the community, I'm excited to see that she wanted to get involved. And that takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. The first item this evening is a request from... Basically, from the Cadillac Leadership Class, which is a part of the Cadillac Chamber of Commerce, for a submittal for their leadership program. They're looking at getting back into essentially the business of picking a project. May not be from the city. We're just putting our name in the hat, if you will, for them to focus on with their upcoming leadership class to try to fund. The city got notification about this just last week, and we're along pretty much a tight timetable. But given what was described to us as framework for what kind of funding might be available if they have a successful campaign, staff worked out a couple of potential project ideas, and we thought we would get city council to tell us if you guys have a preference. If you don't, maybe we'll actually submit both to the chamber. If you do have a preference, then let us know. One concept is to look at essentially replacing the material on the footbridge for the Keith McKellum Walkway with a... Might be a Trex or if there's another brand out there, but essentially a synthetic wood. It's a very expensive project and happens to be around the neighborhood of what this grant might come in at. Another project idea would actually be to look at sprucing up Kenwood Park. I believe it's on the lakeside in the vicinity of a past leadership project that they did a number of years ago that would include also replacing concrete T-pads at the Nine-Hole Disc Golf Course and painting of existing playground that's out there. So, they're both great projects, and it's not as if you say yes to one and no to another that that means that the other one isn't worthy of also getting attention from the city in any way, shape, or form. But just thought we would ask you guys if you had a preference one way or the other.
So, is there a downside to submitting both? Because I know the leadership project likes to have a say in, you know?
Sure.
Is there a downside to submitting both?
I don't... I don't know. I don't think so. I'm sure they would probably prefer we just submit one because they're likely going to get multiple submittals from other agencies and groups as well.
Well, I think the footbridge one is a safety issue. So, that might be a good one. I don't know if it's something that they... You know, they like to always do a project that the most people will see and that, you know, make it very visible in the community, which Kenwood Park is, but so is that footbridge.
I would say I've received so many calls this year on that footbridge from both our seniors and young parents who have little kids walk in. And the city's done a good job in replacing the rotten boards, but they're coming quicker and faster. And I agree with you, Mayor. That is a nice profile project that goes to the safety of young and old and would be enjoyed and viewed by everybody there. That'd be my thought of it.
I guess that's your answer.
Yeah, that's great.
Great idea.
Super.
And I agree, we should probably just do one because they're soliciting project ideas from a lot of different people. And so, I think we don't want to appear as...
Perfect. We'll put in for that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving right along, the next item under the manager's report is regarding an ADA, American with Disabilities Act compliant program that we need to move forward with. This is an MDOT program, an MDOT-funded program. We did go out for bids. This is to replace along US 131 from River Street to 13th Street, the tactile detector plates is what they're called. But if you think about it, it's that different colored plate that's right at the end of, you know, at the sidewalk.
It's got the little bumps on it.
Yes, it has the little bumps on it. So, we did put it out for bid. Only one bid was received from Greater North Services in the amount of $26,226. And the recommendation this evening is for city council to award that to Greater North Services. And Owen, correct me if I'm wrong. I thought MDOT is funding it.
Yeah, it's 100% MDOT-funded.
So, even though it comes out of our major street...
Yep, they wanted us to kind of coordinate it as part of our maintenance contract. But this won't cost the city anything. MDOT is paying 100%.
Is this... Owen, I know we had trouble with those a few years back that disintegrated very...
Yeah, so the ones... The ones north of River Street, there was just an issue. That was the second part of the Mitchell Street Reconstruction Project that was done. And there was just some failure and some poor installation on those. So, they've already... The state has already purchased the actual plates, and they wanted us to facilitate the contractor to get in there to do the work. So, concrete, you know, we'll have to... They're embedded into the concrete, so you can't just pull them out and replace them. You gotta redo the concrete, so... Yep. North of... So, River Street and north out to 13th. There are nine intersections, I believe, that will be done.
I will make a motion to award the ADA detector plate replacement project to Greater North Services for the bid amount of $26,226.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This next item is regarding a recommendation for tree removal at Maple Hill Cemetery. And at the same time, I'm going to put a plug in for a special tree planting grant that we got through DTE Energy, which is going to take place on Friday, October 13th, I believe. Be there by 8:30. I think things are going to start at 8:45. We are looking at having volunteers coming out, working with the city, in a planting of about 20, I believe, 20-plus or about 20 trees that DTE is funding. And it's a real special opportunity, one that we've never had before. And so, I'm just putting that plug in. So, as we're talking about removing trees, we are looking at also replacing trees in that area. The recommendation this evening, although we have a low bidder of Berman's Tree Services, the recommendation this evening is to go with Joe's Tree Service, which is the next bidder up. As you could see in your communication, Berman's Tree Services is located several hours away. We are concerned about some of the logistical challenges that that has and their lack of essentially understanding of the cemetery layout itself. The differential is basically $2,061 from the lowest to the one that we're recommending, which is still significantly lower than the other bidders that came in. Owen, if you want to clarify anything on that?
Yeah, I would just say to recommend, other than low bid, you know, there's obviously a little bit more of a justification needs to happen. So, really, it was a failure to understand the project. And we even... So, we called references, and they checked out okay. The bidder was like, "I do lots of this work. We'll get up there and get it done." But, you know, the other contractor visited the site three times to look at routes and how he'd have to get in and out and remove the trees. The second and probably bigger concern is, you know, if this guy wraps up work, say, on a Thursday afternoon at 6:00 or 7:00 p.m. and heads back home, and we show up the next day and there's cracked foundations or even worse, cracked monuments or any damage like that, and they're already returned home, you know, three hours away to get them back and do the work. Obviously, we'd withhold payment. But just... We felt like it was very justified to use a guy that's helped us up... Helped us out up there on an as-needed basis, never an issue, respects the cemetery, I think, as much as we do. And we felt very comfortable recommending him as a result of that.
That was quite a spread on those quotes.
Yeah, it really was. We got some interesting responses when we set out the bid tab, so...
Seventy-three to seventeen.
Right.
Yeah.
Is Joe's the same people that have been doing it the last two years? Couple of years ago?
Yeah, and as-needed basis, they've done it for us, yep. They do pretty regular work when we have a tree that's damaged and is in the power lines or something that our guys can't do.
How many trees are marked?
Twenty.
Twenty trees?
Yep. Yep.
Never planted twenty.
Joe has family in the cemetery, you know? So, just it's very, very respectful, so...
Twenty trees.
Yep.
$19,000.
Including grinding the stumps and taking away all the debris.
Not really.
So, it's pretty cheap, really.
Compared to last time, is this his usual rate? I thought it was much cheaper.
Well, we've never done a project of this size with him before. So, it typically is one or two at a time, and they're in the street right away, or they've already fallen, or... So, it just varies widely depending on where they're located, how hard they are to get to, how much they have to deal with in terms of wires and things, so...
It seems like too much, but it's a new world.
Seventy-three thousand to 100,000.
That's ridiculous.
It definitely went out on the, you know, in the newspaper and the statewide bidding site. So, confident this is the best pricing we could get.
I was going to say, we went out on a limb.
Yeah, I don't mind.
Out on a limb.
I don't mind not picking... I don't mind not picking the lowest bidder.
Okay.
I understand.
It's just a lot of money, yeah.
I just got to get used to the new prices, apparently.
These aren't small trees either.
Well, I know. I know what's up there. Thousand dollars a tree, though. My goodness.
But again, that's the stump.
I know, grinding to...
And the restoration to, yep, seeding condition, so...
Yep.
I'm going to make a motion to award the Maple Hill Cemetery Tree Removal Project to Joe's Tree Service for the bid amount of $19,061.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Owen, you're on a roll. Why don't you take the banking services recommendation?
All right. So, this is one that hasn't been in front of council in my time, and that's a long time, so...
Twenty...
Yep, 23 years I've been here, and we hadn't done it in that time. But we have been regularly approached by local banks just interested in taking a look at our services and our business. And so, we felt the most equitable way. We've had meetings with the banks on occasion throughout the years. But as that kind of became more serious, we felt like the most equitable and fair way to do that would be to issue a comprehensive RFP to give one institution all our services. So, we did that several months ago. And one of the core requirements, for pretty clear reasons, I think, was it would be a local... Would have a local office. We need to deposit cash and have access to those services. And so, that was a requirement. The three that chose to send us a response to our proposal were Huntington Bank, Horizon Bank, and Mercantile Bank. All three of these were invited and took advantage of the opportunity to come and do a presentation for the financial services team that was part of the evaluation process. All of them made great presentations. I feel like all of them have great local representation that could service the needs of the city just fine. All three institutions are very safe places to do banking and to place funds. At the end of the day, after a lot of discussion, evaluation, our team is recommending that Mercantile Bank be approved as the city's long-term banking partner. Again, you know, I feel like... I love baseball, so this would be like, you know, the opposing pitcher threw a one-hitter and gave up one run, but the other pitcher threw a no-hitter and gave up no runs. So, it's not a one was worse than others. It's just one kind of stood out above others that also were very good institutions. So, you know, there were a couple of highlights that Mercantile offered as part of their presentation, and those are detailed in the communication for you. But, you know, we were grateful, I think, and excited to walk through this process that we haven't really taken a serious evaluation of these services for a long time. We've been very happy with our provider. These services are obviously very, very important as, you know, payroll accounts payable and all these things go out. The technology that they're all based on is very important to us. Again, no discomfort with two, but just especially satisfied and excited about some of the capabilities of Mercantile Bank. So, our recommendation then is to approve Mercantile Bank as the city's new banking partner and then to authorize a city manager and director of finance to execute all relevant agreements and contracts to establish the relationship and then to authorize the city manager and director of finance as signers on all city banking accounts established as part of the new relationship.
I appreciate you doing this, this review. This is, it's, you know, inertia.
Yep.
And comfort sometimes, you know, when you pursue other things. I appreciate the work and the effort that went into this. So, I will take your recommendation and make a motion to approve Mercantile Bank as the city's new banking partner, to authorize the city manager and director of finance to execute all relevant agreements required to establish the relationship... Excuse me. And to authorize the city manager and director of finance as signers on all city banking accounts established as part of the new relationship.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Mayor Falcons.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for our second and last public comment for this evening. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order. Should anyone have anything?
I've got... I have started. I've gone on the city website, and I would ask the public to be involved in start looking at the proposed new zoning ordinance that the city has. Put on the site. I know we're early in the process, but again, I think we want to be involved in the direction. The concerns in the beginning of my investigation, so as the other council members look at this, is the ordinance that's on our site is basically a pro forma ordinance that, in my research, looks like it's been used with the bigger cities, Detroit, Flint, those larger cities. And the new designations are actually designed to increase per capita density, meaning to stuff more people into smaller areas. So, in a Detroit, for example, where they had whole neighborhoods downtown that were empty and vacant, it allowed those old R1s to have basically everything in them, multifamily, different designations, to recreate development in those neighborhoods. I don't think that's what Cadillac's looking for. I think that would change the nature of our community so much. In my initial reading, and again, I want to go back to it a few times, it appears that in our R1, R2 designations, they would have these new designations. But they would allow for short-term rentals in any of them by right, if I'm reading it correctly, and only require a special use if someone lost their permit in that area and reapplied for it. So, I would be very concerned about that, and I'm not sure that's what we want to do. We've talked about right now, that's not something we want to do. But now is the time for all of us to read that, understand that, ask those questions. Because as I went to the redevelopment-ready website, it's also not required that we follow their standard guidelines. It's required that we look at our designations, update them, figure out where development would be appropriate in our community and address that. It's not a, here's the pro forma, take it and do it this way, and it's a cookie cutter. Fits all. The last part of my initial research, I think Grand Rapids, right now, is having some problems with some of the updates they've done to zoning. There's a huge battle going on in their beautiful historic district, wealthy street, heritage hill, all those. Because one of the changes they made, the developers are arguing that they can now go in and tear down some of those big houses that people have put a lot of money in to maintain the R1 nature and put in apartment-style housing. In the historical... It's an argument that's going on right now. I want to make sure we avoid that law of unintended consequences. So, please, people, please, council, please, people, go on and read it. And I will say, I did not find it an easy read. I've gotten through it five times now. And our archaic one is easier to read than this form one. So, I would like us to get involved because I don't think that's what we want for our community. That's it.
Go ahead.
Can I say something?
You sure?
So, not about that, but thank you. On Wednesday, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And on Wednesday evening at 6:00, there will be a candlelight vigil down at the city park. And I encourage folks to come out and show support for our neighbors who may be victims of domestic violence, to show that they're not alone. Also, as you drive down Main Street, you'll notice that there's... That many of the merchants have put lights in their windows, and the purple lights for domestic violence awareness are up on the lampposts. So, just letting you know about that event on Wednesday, and that's what the purple lights are about.
Can you talk to the gentleman a little bit about the county animal control and about, you know, neighbors feeding stray cats? Do we have anything?
That was what my good-of-the-order comment was going to be. Thank you, council member. And I appreciate you coming in and sharing with the city your concerns. I was chatting offline here a second ago with city attorney. We were looking at the code itself as well. And there is reference to dogs and cats and nuisances and animals in that fashion. There is an animal control division of Wexford County. However, I do not believe that animal control will do anything in terms of dealing with stray or feral cats. Our current ordinance is a little very, you know, I'll borrow councilmember King's word, archaic in terms of its age and a little vague in terms of dealing specifically with stray cats. It's more towards animals, whether it's cats or dogs, that are owned by somebody or being harbored by somebody. And so, if somebody says, "Well, it's not my animal," if we are out on a call regarding an animal and they say, "Well, it's not my animal," then we're a little bit caught in a position where there's not much we can do. But that is something we'll look into and see what we can do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do need to go into closed session tonight. So, if someone would like to make the motion?
I... I make a motion to adjourn to closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with pending litigation in City of Cadillac versus Cassidy Cale, case number 23-0030949, comma, and City of Cadillac versus Neil and Joe Allman, case number 23-0030948, comma, for the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the city and to discuss a written confidential legal opinion with the city attorney. Invite Adam Ojebka, Director of Public Safety.
Support. Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls. Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to return to open session.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Alabas.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes. And we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.